How much it costs.
To say that you can't consider like ten ninety minutes.
Isn't that what he said, that fifty-five bucks is going to do is get great jobs?
No, I'm not sure he said that.
Yeah.
We're recording.
Okay.
That's what we're recording.
Yeah.
Three hundred bucks.
So is that what it was?
Yes.
Three hundred bucks.
So is that what it was?
Yes.
Consolidated.
Sharing.
Sharing space right there.
I see you're recording.
Not shareable.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be the first time heard.
Okay.
Now obviously all this, this is hurting.
I always think on the back.
For redoing his place, listen.
So we're divorced.
Part manning?
Yes.
Fourth leaning.
This photo was the current council.
We lost photos last time.
Yeah, that's right.
It's the way it goes.
We have to meet so you did.
He's using here by now.
And this was making over previous council. It was okay. But Sean's all in this chair. So you have something you told us shot in the office body. Downey. So I suppose you could explain that.
He also shot me as well. Kind of paste, physically kind of paste the picture on.
I'd like to call this meeting in order. Please join me.
Ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, and to the brother for which this stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne. Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Nebraska. Mr. Eichelberg.
President.
Mr. France.
Here.
Mr. DeBordy.
Here.
Mr. Marshall.
Here.
Mrs. McGlatton.
Here.
Mr. Saun.
Here.
Ake here, one answer. At this time, were there any residents or property owners wish to speak before the council? Let me just call Minister three minutes, please.
I certainly tried. My name is Myron Leana.
Could you speak? The mic is recording.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. My name is Myron Leana. On July twelfth, nineteen sixty-two, I took an oath to defend my country against all enemies foreign and domestic. Unfortunately, our country is going down the toilet. I have, I have listened, I've listened to the radio, I've listened to all these, and I hear politicians, and I have heard Sandra Day O'Connor, a Supreme Court Justice, say, "We are democracy." "We are not a democracy, we are a republic." Democracy goes to a plutocracy, which we have right now. We have two major parties who are now our political aristocracy. We got rid of an aristocracy, they have come back. And a plutocracy turns to tyranny. And tyranny is fast approaching our country. We are not celebrating the Second American Revolution, which occurred from eighteen twelve to eighteen fourteen. And most people do not know the real cause of that. It was found out that England owned fifty percent of the Bank of America, and the U.S. had just passed the Thirteenth Amendment, which has disappeared from our government. And that Thirteenth Amendment barred all attorneys from any political office. That is why our country is in the state of disrepair it is, because they have taken over all three branches of the government. In eighteen fifty, we stopped teaching civics in our classrooms. And civics is the study of natural rights and common law. And I want to read you something. These are, these are Supreme Court rules. Legislatures are authorized under the Constitution ordained by the people to write statutes and codes enforced as law to control bureaucrats, municipalities, government agencies, elected officials, interstate commerce, but not the people, whose rights are unenable and cannot be legislated. I am one of the people, I formed the government. How can the government be superior to me? I have all my God-given rights, and my rights are limited by interfering with somebody else's rights. That's all. That's one thing. Another.
Could you kind of get to your point?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We are, and I want to read one thing from Judge, from Anthony Scalia. Writing for the majority confirmed that the American grand jury is neither part of the judicial, executive, nor legislative branch of government, but instead belongs to the people. It is, in effect, a fourth branch of government, which the lawyers have hidden, governed and administered directly by and on behalf of the American people, and its authority emanates from the Bill of Rights and has the power to enforce law and remove people from office. I am currently the administrator, or not the administrator, I'm recruiting people to join the common law grand jury so that we may take back our country. That's what I'm here for, if anybody's interested. I have information handouts here on, from NationalLibertyAlliance.org, and that is our goal, to take back our country. And we can do it. We only have to stand up and do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other residents wish to speak?
Robert Lamb, ninety-nine, Lamb, down low. Couple of questions. The ACO project, I believe, is coming off of the agenda for tonight. We have a set of specs to follow the ACO's report and repairs.
If there's not connected finance, you'll put it back.
You can answer them later. The signposts are being replaced for the markings of the streets. The originals were concrete, the new ones are steel pipe, green signs. Some of the ones they're removing are like, good shape. Cost, don't know. Why are we doing that? Where's the old ones going? Sandy Hollow Road is a, two items on the agenda for the budget. Hundred and fifty thousand, new item, and another one is number twenty-four and twenty-five. It's a police station. Where they going, where they coming from? There's nothing unless somebody's got information.
I'm sorry, could you clarify that? Did you, could you clarify your question here, Mr. Lamson?
I didn't see where, on the agenda, the money is being spent for new fencing for Sandy Hollow? Hundred and fifty thousand being asked for?
The budget or the agenda?
The budget.
The budget, no.
To the SIP, it's not, that's part of the SIP, it wasn't budget.
Okay. So there's no action, or the cost of taxpayers' payment in this year's budget?
That was not, that was brought forward in the SIP.
I was very surprised, I checked with a couple of guys visiting the lunchtime at the restaurant store next door. The town agent, multi-million dollar budget, doesn't own a postal digger. Can't believe it. Got a lot of wood posts in town, bottom of Barokoff, lay inside the road. We're not fixing them. They said we don't have a postal digger. Thirty-six hundred dollars, he did three auger, heavy duty. Think we can afford that? And... The state has a hit process to purchase equipment, things, does the town use that? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lamb. Mr. Woodridge?
Dave Holder, twenty-nine, Churchill Road. Charlie Carnom and I asked that you add the agenda to make the tri-counture contract. We essentially asking, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract to negotiate with Kent Floss. Pretty straightforward, and we actually have to bid with it, and it comes back for the clerk. Hesitate to put it on the agenda when it's the busiest minute of the year for the council, but we really need to get these surveyors out in the year before the leaves all come up. Delay it another two weeks would be fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll stick around, Dave.
That will happen. Well, I'm assuming that will happen. Soon my fellow councillors will support that. Any other comments from residents?
Guess so, it just made it.
Three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Denise Detrich at fifty-nine Wendell Comrie Road. And I had written a letter to you, but also felt like at last minute that I needed to come down and also urge you, please not to cut the budget for the school. If we had made this decision for the last four to five years and didn't ask the Board of Ed to put forward a zero percent budget, we wouldn't be here right now. If they would have put forward a little at a time, people would not be as upset as they are right now. And somebody at the meeting the other evening told me they actually saved money by not having the increase go a little at a time. But people don't realize that over the, you know, when they're thinking about the big bulk of things. The state is cutting us more and more money, and what are we to do for our kids? And what are we to do for our regular education kids? They are going to suffer, because there is no real state laws for them, to protect them from what gets cut from them, but there are for kids with special education needs, and we all deserve equal. So I urge you that, they have, the Board of Ed has been making cuts every year with a zero percent, because pride, income, the money for expenses keeps going up and up. So by keeping it at zero, they had to make cuts to keep it at zero. To ask them to do more cuts, I do not think is fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad you made it.
Thank you.
Anyone else have, any comments? Are there any Committee of Commission board reports at this time? Comments of town councillors? Yes, Mr. France.
Presentation. Well, it's coming up at the public hearing on Monday night. One of the residents asked for those, councillors who had reservations about the budgets presented in the public hearing, if they would go on record as to what their reservations were. Bringing up the presentation. I put this presentation together to go through what the reservations were. Second slide, please. And also to give a little background on roles and responsibilities for more of that. Background, Connecticut General Statute establishes, among other things, due to the Board of Education, they need to provide an appropriate learning environment, which includes books, supplies, materials, allocation of resources in schools equitably, proper maintenance of facilities, and a safe school setting, among many other things. In the control of schools, each town through its Board of Education maintains control of all public school limits, limits, and shall be a school district. So this is established, the town has a school district in the state of Connecticut. Towns, however, have been, since Board of Ed doesn't have the authority to appropriate money for tax, levy taxes, towns have been delegated the duty to raise revenue by taxation. For our charter, the town council is the budget-making authority and shall fix the mill rate and levy tax on property in the town in the ensuing fiscal year. So in a nutshell, the Board of Ed establishes policy, provides the education environment, and it's responsibility of the town council for providing sufficient funding to support that appropriate learning environment. Excellent, please. One of the things, one of the challenges that we've faced in trying to prepare for this is availability of information. One of the things that we strive for in all our meetings, Board of Ed, Town Council, across, state statute is very specific on when meetings are, minutes are supposed to be available for public view, and when votes are recorded, and when they're supposed to be available. So many of the, many of the public doesn't know what, don't know what the requirement is. But votes are required to be available within forty-eight hours of that vote. Doesn't it mean these will be up online, or if you go into the Board of Ed or the Town Council office, it needs to be a written record what that vote is within forty-eight hours. The minutes from those meetings are required to be available within seven days. So you have seven days to get that done. And if you have an internet website, you can put it up there, but there's no requirement to. My practice on Town Council, predominantly on the Board of Ed as well, we have that available on the IQM website or on the Board of Ed website. The challenge we faced going into, for trying to engage with the Board of Ed this year is going into the January meeting for the public budget hearing, two of their minutes were not available to understand what they had done at Finance Committee. And as of today, there are still three minutes, February, March, and April meeting minutes are not available, available to us to read, to see what actions were taken. If you look at the timing of when the budget was presented, the Board of Ed is required to present that budget at the end of February. So the February minutes would be key to knowing what they discussed and what actions they may have taken or not taken as far as the budget is concerned. Next slide, please. One of the things that was different this year of putting together a budget was we did not have a joint Finance Committee meeting. On record, it's been at least twenty years since that happened. Typically, it happens in December or January. In my experience, December is when we tried to schedule it, the Board of Ed wasn't ready at that point, and January was when it occurred. The Board of Ed Finance Chair sent rationale that for ten years of the joint meetings he had attended, all the town council came for saying, "Bring in a zero." You know, and they wanted to be in the same budget process as other town departments, and transparency is the board's goal. In my two years, that's not what's happened. The Board, the Town Council's not come in and told the Board of Ed they had to come in with a zero. And in process, leading up to the budget, even before we get to the joint meeting, I had several discussions with the superintendent over what their plan was. And by town charter, the superintendent is responsible to present that budget to the Board of Ed. I attended, in past years, the December and January Finance Committee meetings, and there was substantive discussion. Whether the Board of Ed took that discussion on board was not really my chart, but I was able to provide input to that process that was not available this year. Next slide. In my first year, one of the things that was alleged, stated was that the Town Council comes in and says that you need to bring in a zero. When my first year superintendent made that decision, it was a one-point-one million dollar increase potential, but as he told me, they didn't believe the town could afford that. And so he decided, even before we got to our joint meeting, that he was going to bring in a zero on the budget, because he didn't feel the town could afford that. But last year, in the Budget Letter Directive, it was essentially bringing a zero, except for contractual rate. If you have salary increase, you have an increase in your contractual costs, certainly you bring those in. However, the superintendent, once again, proposes zero, because at that time, we were looking at a significant building project that the Board of Ed was going to bring forward. So, and also presented at that time during the joint meeting was, there were going to be nine retirements that the Board of Ed was not going to rehire. And what happened after that, as was presented at the town meeting, is they decided they needed to rehire those. And of course, that impact was felt in the other accounts of operations and maintenance, and in the instructional accounts. And this year, because we didn't have that, there were two significant issues that happened this year. One was the significant healthcare costs this year, which has an impact on the budget, that we didn't get a chance to discuss what the impact was. And also, we had changed our social services department that, as we heard at the planning meeting on Monday, was thought to impact head of the Board of Education, but did not. We, in fact, increased the opportunity for council, which if we had had the opportunity to meet together, we might have been able to have that discussion. Next slide, please. Now, a couple of examples, and I will say that there have been discussions today and information forwarded to the council late this afternoon that has addressed some of these issues. But as of Monday night, these were some of the issues that, why I had reservations, why I brought it forward, a public hearing. Couple of examples, special aid costs. During the January meeting, the Finance Chair said the state reimbursement was seventy-three percent last year, and it was. And was assuming it was going to be again this year. After that meeting, I called the gentleman who makes that decision, and it's eighty-two percent this year. And he expects it's two to three percent lower in the second payment, which would be around eighty percent. You know, and for those that don't know, it used to be a hundred percent reimbursement. What the legislature has done is it capped the total amount of reimbursement, and then based on the input that the Board of Ed provides twice a year, they fund that based on a total capped amount. And so that's why you see fluctuation year in, year out of what that amount is. And it's very difficult, and the Board of Ed has a very strong challenge of trying to estimate what those costs are, because it does vary year in and year out. The magnet school tuition is a challenge. Eighty-five thousand this year, unexpected, understand that. The challenge is, we have no way of assessing, we're not even assessing the current status. You know, polling the current students, what's your intention? And we can ask them in December, January. It's not binding, but certainly if they all said yes, we would know they're all going back. And if we ask the eighth graders what they're doing, their families, are you going to come to Leder High School or you're not? Does it open us up to the possibility that they would then go look for something? Possibly. But it would give us some idea potentially of what that account would look like, as opposed to guessing based on what happened last year, what happens next year. Town council questions, at the January meeting, we asked these questions, those answers came today. But we waited three and a half months to get the answers, and we get them the day that we're bringing forth the second budget. So it's very difficult for the Town Council, waiting for answers to try and make decisions. Next slide. This is a slide that was presented to public hearing on Monday, and it accurately states, there's a four-point-three percent increase and cumulative inflation is about eight-point-six percent over that period. Next slide, please. But if you take a longer view, and while this slide is very busy, you go back another five years, and we're double the rate of inflation. And why is that? Well, because the Board of Ed had increases of, almost every year, of five percent or more, when inflation was two percent or three percent at most. So, why yes, in the last five years, that is, that is an accurate assessment of what happened. But if you go back fifteen years, and you take that, the Board of Ed has enjoyed a large increase year over year. It's one of the challenges that we see in government. Governments, when things are good and you have additional revenue, they find ways to spend it. And that's what we did. The challenge now is that revenue stream is not continuing. The grant list is not going up significantly year over year. We don't have additional revenue coming in. And so our only choice, if we continue to expand the spending and increase spending, is to raise the mill rate and increase the burden on the residents of our town. Next slide, please. Finally, a summary, the primary reservation I had, voted by the Town Council, was taxpayers couldn't afford an eight percent increase. That's really what it came down to. Irrespective of all the other chatter, it was too much. In our case, the Board of Ed, I didn't feel, provides sufficient detail, a form of assessment. A lot of their line items are summaries, they're carried forward year over year. But in the current year, there's no history on individual line items, what it was last year, two years ago, three years ago. If you go into the town's budget, you can find each individual line item was for the last four, five, six, seven years. And that, that makes it very challenging to decide, you know, is that the right number? Line item transfers were made without supporting documentation within the minutes. And we do have a letter today from, from the Finance Chair that explains the moves of money this current year. But you go back through the minutes, and there's no documentation of those moves applied at large. And in one case, the documentation that's in the minutes doesn't match what was forwarded to us in the letter today. You know, in addition, the letter we received today was a response to inquiries from January, but you know, one of the things, lack of response makes it very difficult to assess and move forward. One thing the legislature did to allow the governing authority, in our case, the Town Council, Public Act thirteen sixty, an act concerning consolidation of non-educational services, allowed the council to provide questions back in writing and get responses back from the Board of Ed if they were not going to, or if they were going to accept those recommendations. But the intention was really to provide opportunity for ways to consider financial efficiencies and promote transparency in school budgets, because there's a perception that school budgets are just a chunk of money that is sent across down the road for, in our case, and you don't really know what happens within the budget. Once again, it's perception, not necessarily reality. And finally, it's a general, based on the answers that were provided at public hearings, it was just a general lack of understanding, you know, of the budget itself, specific questions, specific answers were not provided in broad context in how the town budget, in this case, seventy percent of the town budget is spent. So I, as I said, some of those questions were answered in the letters that were received from the Board of Ed today. But going into the public hearing, these were the issues that I had, why I had reservations approving the budget that went to public hearing. Thank you.
Any other councillors have any comments? Mr. Saun.
I would like to extend my condolences to the Starks family, and also to the first responders who arrived at the scene of that accident. It was a horrible, horrible accident. And I want to second Counselor Eichelberg's repeated comments about be careful if you have a motorcycle. It's all about judgment, it's all about things that happen when you least expect them. So thoughts going out to the first responders and the family.
Any other councillors have comments? We have the Communications and Referrals, Council Subcommittee Liaison, oh, sorry. Entertaining with motion.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of April ninth, two thousand fourteen.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any corrections, additions? Roxanne, would you call the role? Mr. DeBordy?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGlatton?
I'm staying.
Mr. Saun?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one extension. Motion carries. Subcommittee reports, Admin Committee, Mr. Eichelberg?
Administration has not met since our last meeting, nothing to report.
Mr. France?
I don't know what's on your agenda, nothing to say.
Did IT meet? Anybody?
Not since our last meeting.
Landers Planning Public Works?
We.
Okay. Moving right along. Liaison reports. Mr. Saun, please.
I have a twist for you. WPCA did meet, I wasn't there. I have nothing to report, other than they did finally receive the McGuire report on the source. I don't know if they discussed it, but I think we all have copies of that, so. Other than that, I have nothing to report.
Any other liaison reports?
I got one.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Gil's Freight Fire Company held their elections last month, and for their officers, and the results were made public, and the new officers are recognized at their annual banquet at the Lake of Isles Clubhouse, not the Lake of Isles Club, of course. And I got to tell you, if anyone hasn't been there, you got to go, the food there is phenomenal. I must have went to step up in line three times.
I observed that.
I ate myself stupid that night. Tony Secoan is still the chief. Stephen Holyfield is the new deputy chief. Assistant chief is Jeff Earhart, and Nick Poison is the new captain. Jerry Trotta is the fire police captain now, and he's done a lot for the fire police in a short time in the force. And like Chairperson Davis said, she was there, the mayor was there, myself was there. Counselor, former Counselor Sharon Lethick, he was honored for eighteen years of support, which I thought was a classy move on Tony's part. It was a great evening.
Mr. France?
Building Committee has a special meeting on Monday, the twenty-first, summary of that meeting. The mayor reported the pump station, which is the final phase of the Algonquin High Water Project, is on track, still on track to complete by the end of May. The Building, Board of Education Facilities Project, there was an ongoing discussion, a continued discussion of the letter that was brought to the Building Committee from the Board of Ed concerning the separation of the renovation elementary school consolidation project. For the police facility, demolition contract has been approved. Plan to be on site most of May, three to four weeks is what they expect that to take. We have, which is on the agenda tonight, the water supply to Town Hall and Town Hall Annex will be shifted from coming from Leder Center School to come directly off the main. One of the reasons for that is we've had water loss that we're unable to identify and locate that is somewhere between Town Hall and Leder Center School, going probably into the ground. But to alleviate that by taking the main, the ground from the main, we'll be able to shut the valve over Leder Center School and stop the loss of water. Planning and zoning commission had fed back, the Building Committee needed to approve their documents. In a formality, they pulled back their application, they resubmit that application. And the general discussion was, there was a...
And the general discussion was, there was a statute requirement, state statute requirement of a seven-day advance notice that they were within, it's only four or five days. So to be within the state statute doesn't delay anything, but it does allow nobody to be able to come back later and question it. The big topic of discussion was related to septic system. They had done initial design, provided a ledge light, but the depth of the septic system was deeper than ledge light would approve. Based on the initial data, it was correct, but when it went back for formal review, so they had to do that redesign or be going back to ledge light for approval. Can I give you some more?
Any questions? Any other liaison reports?
I should have said this under council comments, so I did want to, for the public, to the viewing audience, that SCARA is going to be holding a free paint-only drop-off event for anyone in Connecticut, open to residents. Households may bring any amount of latex or oil-based paint to the event. The first event is this Saturday, April twenty-sixth, at SCARA's office at Seven Hurlbut Road in Yales Ferry. So if you have paint, there's the place. If you don't have paint, I'd avoid that area, because I have a feeling there's going to be a huge traffic jam. But a really good event, it's really nice having SCARA in our town, being able to take advantage of some good things. I'll report to the mayor, Mayor Rob Leeco.
Okay, thank you. My emergency service, emergency management director and myself met with Sue Boland, who is the coordinator for Connecticut and Rhode Island, Rick Cross, regarding planning for the use of emergency shelters. You may remember during previous storms, and there really was only one that required sheltering of some Leder residents. Typically, the shelters that are opened are in Stonington or Groton. But Russell Shaw, our administrator of Emergency Services, is working to put together a regional agreement for this side of the river that would be similar to something that was put in effect, an agreement that was signed by six towns on the other side of the river. What it basically does is it establishes the process for determining which shelters would be opened, and also the process of the staffing requirement required. You know, it's generally agreed that, you know, so far what we've seen is that we can handle these type of emergencies between Groton, Stonington, and Norwich, but we just want to be prepared in the event that, you know, the water rises high enough to where those particular shelters are not available. There was something that's just informative for the council, those watching, anyone who has any involvement with some of the organizations in town, the volunteer organizations. We had an issue with construction of dugouts and sheds on town property by a volunteer group, and it turns out that that was done without proper permitting, and now there's a zoning violation involved. And, you know, sometimes we just look at these activities going on, and we have, you know, and again, you can't take enough, you can't say enough about the volunteers and the organizations that serve the town, and the work and the value that they provide. But, you know, we still have, you know, regulations we have to follow. And so, you know, please be sure, any of the organizations you interface with, remind them that anything they plan to do as far as construction on town property needs to go through the proper permitting. As far as some of the questions that were asked this evening, as far as the ACO construction, we have a call into the state ACO. To date, he has not returned the call, he has not visited, and we still have no report on his findings. Sandy Hollow Road guard rail fencing, as Counselor France indicated, that has been requested in the SIP for certainly my three years, and I have recommended against that particular work, that will be replacements. If you go up there, you'll see that, you know, these are the typical posts with the wire between them. It's estimated it costs about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace that. You know, I have concerns about whose responsibility that is, and whether that is really a priority Again, I would remind citizens that town employees do not speak for the town, and if there are questions about town operations, what we're capable of, what we do, what equipment we have, you can talk to town employees, this is America, you know, we can't stop you as long as you're not on, you know, in areas that you're not supposed to be visiting. But anything that town employees say, as far as I'm concerned, is not official information, and therefore would have no value. And I don't say that detrimental to our town employees, it's just that they do not speak for the town. Anyone who has a question can come and ask me, and I've yet to find a person, or you can certainly look for someone that doesn't get an answer when I, that doesn't get an answer when they ask a question. As far as replacing concrete signs with steel signs, that's part of a program that we've been had underway for many years. It's a part of complying with federal requirements. The signs are being phased in over time. Although this mandate doesn't necessarily apply to the entire town, it makes sense to have uniformity in the signs, the road signs that you put in. So certainly, as we're moving along, we do make those replacements. The used signs are stored along with a lot of other construction equipment up at the transfer station, and we actually make use of them for fill, or on occasion for retaining structures. Just to follow up on WPCA, I did visit the Adrian Hill Pump Station site today. The foundation has been poured for the pump station. There's a setting period for the concrete, but we're on track to have that delivered, the pump station delivered and installed, and I think we should be on track for the end of May to complete that project. And that is my report.
Any questions for the mayor?
May I? The ACO thing is a little bizarre. You know, clearly, there's some work that needs to be done, but with, I mean, he comes and he says there's problems, but then he doesn't write up a report. I'm really confused, obviously.
Was that a rhetorical question? I am too, and, you know, we certainly do, and I think, you know, this is, you know, I think there's a general agreement between the mayor and the council that we want to do, it needs to be done. But, you know, and I'm sure he's a very busy person with a hundred and sixty-nine towns. But again, I feel that we've made, we've taken the action we need to take in order to contact him, and I will, you know, messages get lost, I will certainly make another call tomorrow.
I'd recommend we refer that back to finance, maybe spend some time, the time to get the input, no reason to leave it on the old business for the council.
Okay, we can do that, refer it back to finance.
We have to take it off the table.
Oh. Let's do that, go ahead.
We have to remove from the table first?
Yeah.
Make that motion. Motion removed from the table. Motion to authorize emergency appropriations for ACO facility repaired by transfer of twenty thousand dollars from account two-one-zero-nine-zero-three-zero-five-five-eight-nine-one-five. CNR undesignated to account two-one-zero-four-zero-one-one-one-five-eight-two-four-two, property maintenance ACO.
Second.
The motion is to remove from the table. Any discussion on the remove from the table here in the hour? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Do you make a motion to refer it back to finance?
I'd be saying, looking at voting down, taking a vote about the agenda, or you could just vote to remove it from the agenda.
We're going to refer it back to file, we'll, we might just have to file when it comes back. What did the chair?
I'm going to say, to make it clean, let's just vote on it, up or down, and then it'll be nice and clean. But I think everybody, I'll speak for everybody, as we vote it down, it's not because we don't want to do the work, we make, we count that discussion without prejudice, there you go.
Motion to authorize emergency appropriations for ACO facility repaired by transfer of twenty thousand dollars from account two-one-zero-nine-zero-three-zero-five-five-eight-nine-one-five. CNR undesignated to account two-one-zero-four-zero-one-one-one-five-eight-two-four-two, property maintenance ACO.
Second.
Further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. McGrattan?
No.
Mr. Sol?
No.
Mr. Allen?
No.
Mrs. Davis?
No.
Mr. Eichelberg?
No.
Mr. France?
No.
Mr. Gabori?
No.
Mr. Marshall?
No.
Zero in favor, eight proposed.
Motion does not pass, and I will refer this to, back to finance.
The other options, when they get the answer, they can agree with this, they file it, or they don't.
Right, correct.
Depending on what response is.
Somebody from Land Use make the next motion, please?
I move to approve a proposed resolution establishing an ad hoc committee reviewing zoning regulations for the town of Leder, as contained in the draft dated March twenty-five, two thousand and fourteen. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Yes.
There were a couple of comments and concerns brought to my attention stemming from a state statute which separates the authority of the town council from planning and zoning. However, I think it's not clear to those people that what this committee is doing is making recommendations and not usurping the authority of planning and zoning to actually decide on whether or not to implement those things. So I don't think we have a problem with stepping on the toes of our planning and zoning.
They did approve this at their last meeting.
Yes, but despite that, the people who spoke with me, as I said, brought forward a statute which could have suggested, if it was exactly as I originally thought they were saying, could have suggested that even with that vote, the town council still didn't have the authority to decide what was going to be changed. But that's not what's going on, and so I think we're good with this. Good. Yes.
I'd just like to comment, several meetings prior to this meeting, I was specifically identified as stating that I couldn't make sense of the current zoning regulations. I believe the term was, when I read them, frontwards, backwards, and sideways. And I'd like to just read briefly a paragraph which comes from a letter dated September thirteenth, two thousand and twelve, from attorney Carl Landelina, who was hired by the town to review this. While I certainly appreciate the time and effort that went into this document, in my opinion, there is more detail here than is necessary. In fact, in my opinion, the level of detail makes the document difficult to read and difficult to use. While many municipalities are trying to simplify their zoning regulations, this document seems overly complicated. I'm not going to read the rest, but he goes on to identify sixty-one different bullet points at issue. So I stand behind what I said, I can understand it frontwards, backwards, or sideways.
That's true. Any other comments? Yes.
Question. Are we just asking this committee to look at one A to Z, or are they going to be specific about picking out certain areas that are troublesome now? Or how is it going to be done? Since it's, you know, quite extensive, and they only have three months?
My understanding is that they are going to be reviewing the entire document, making recommendations regarding it.
Okay. And I think also that there are certain sections that clearly are not clear.
Yes, there are certain sections which are far more cumbersome than others.
Yes.
And I also want to clarify that we are forming a committee. This is not the town council even making recommendations. We will have two members from the town council, one at a liaison.
Correct.
And then we will have other people from other committees and from the public at large who will be forming this committee. So the committee is chartered by the council, it's not writing regulations, it's making recommendations. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission, if I understand the process, will review the recommendations, hold a public hearing for public comment, at which time all public input will be accepted. And then the Planning and Zoning Committee will vote on the recommendations and/or change them, but they will make the changes to the zoning regulations.
And I should also add that there will be one member from the council on the committee, but, and that's what we'll be voting on, but, and also the makeup will include two members of the Planning and Zoning, of Planning and Zoning Commission, one from the ZVA, and then one person at large. And as chairman, I would like to appoint a liaison, and to me, the very best person that could be liaison is Mr. Gabori, because he's a former English teacher, and boy, does this document need a good English teacher. So, and he has graciously agreed to accept that task, so.
Any other questions, comments? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski? Oops, I forgot, he's not here. Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Eight here, zero, eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Anybody like to amend the agenda at this time? I believe we have, Mr. Holder, just somebody have that motion?
No. Yes. So this is a motion to amend the agenda, it's not the motion.
Correct.
Kent Frost, okay. So I move to amend the agenda to add a motion to authorize the mayor to execute agreement with Kent Frost Landscape Architecture for planning and design work in connection with the northern section of the Trittown Trail in Leder. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. That will be item number ten, move ten as eleven, if that makes sense.
I have to vote on a motion.
What?
You have to vote?
Yes.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sol?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Moving on to the consent calendar, anyone wish to take any item off the consent calendar? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Boy, I'm slipping to that. Now, Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Okay, Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number three, finance.
Make a motion to adopt fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen budget in the amount of fifty-two million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, comprised of a general government budget of twenty-two million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, sixty-four dollars, and a board of education budget of thirty million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Second.
I will amend the agenda, amend the motion at the Finance Committee, special meeting that met at five o'clock today. We reviewed the budget based on public hearing input and amended the amounts as follows. I'll reread the motion. Motion to adopt a fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen budget in the amount of fifty-two million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. Oh, I take that back, you already changed it.
Yeah, you already changed it.
Wow, I take that back? It is as, wow. You're awfully awesome. So the explanation is, from the budget that was passed for the public hearing, based on significant comment and the general feel that eight percent increase was not going to pass, the Finance Committee, and before you, I would like to thank both Counselor Allen and Counselor Sol for their help, as well as the other town councils that joined us at the budget process, and Mr. Strickland and Stephanie Calhoun, who also attended the Finance Committee, provided input and helped us come to a compromised set of numbers. What amounted to was a decrease in the Board of Ed budget of four hundred and ninety-five What amounted to is a decrease of the board of ed budget of $495,000 and a decrease, additional decrease over the 119 that we already removed, of $123,000 from the general government budget to come to the numbers we have tonight. What that amounts to is an increase of 17, or 1.75 bills, which is a little over 6%. While still not, still high, is, I think, more reasonable than 8%. I think there were a lot of comments at the public hearing related to, I could take an increase, but not all at once, and so, and honestly, I wanted to bring it lower, but I just could not come up with any additional money reasonably to take out of the budget on your side, or the general government.
So I want to make some, some points about our educational system in Ledyard. I'm going to vote for this cut. I don't like it, I don't want to, but I'm going to vote for it because I think we have to. I want to bring out some, some facts, some of which were brought out at the public hearing on Monday night, but one was not that I think is especially important. One of the facts that was brought out is that we have over 600 kids in study halls now. Now, study halls are not a bad thing in themselves, there's a good purpose for them, but having 600 kids in the study halls in this school system is a result of not having enough courses available or classes available for the kids to take that want to take them. Therefore, they have to take study halls. That was brought out and discussed on Monday night. What was not brought out is that the teachers voluntarily decided to teach six sessions instead of five. Most towns in this state have teachers teaching five sessions, that means five classes during the day. Our teachers voluntarily teach six. That is a huge contribution that our teachers make to our educational system, and it's as a result of previous cuts that we've made in the past, in part. I want to urge the voters to vote for this budget whether you like it or not, because if you're opposed to cuts, I'm with you all the way. If you don't think this is enough of a cut, I want you to consider what our teachers are already doing for our kids. Things have changed. There were many points brought out on Monday night about how school was when we were in school. Excellent comments were made about the fact that in most families, at least when I was a kid, one parent worked, one parent was at home. That's not true anymore. Not only are both parents working, but some parents are working two jobs. So the kids come home from school, there's no one home. Kids sit at the dinner table and eat by themselves because there's no one at home, because the parents are working. That puts more burden on the school system. We also didn't have special education when I was in school. The needs of kids with special education requirements are extremely expensive, and as Councilor France pointed out, the state is no longer fully funding those applications that were required to meet. We also didn't have magnet schools. And once again, those are costs to the Ledyard school system that we have to bear. We are reimbursed for much of the cost, but it is still a cost and a burden on the system. Kids are getting hurt by the changes in the way we educate. Demands on teachers are much higher than they were when I was in school, and, and I want all of the people, the residents, the voters, the taxpayers, to understand how many demands are put on our educational system today that did not exist when we were in school ourselves. So, thank you, Ledyard Schools, for what you do, and voters, if you please support this budget, I intend to. Thank you.
Mr. Michaelberg?
Two points, taken basically from the public comments on Monday night. Mimi Peculwellen pointed out very astutely that much of what we have to finance through taxpayer dollars comes down from mandates from the state and federal government without any money backing it up. And I very much agree with her. Many of those things need to be changed. We are told that we will spend money on certain things, and we are told that we don't have any option on it, and we are told to come up with the money somewhere. Some of those things need to change. Others, like Mike, could, Councilor France, could tell you exactly what those items are, but there are several of them. My second point is, several of the public, of the people in the public that spoke on Monday night pointed out the situation of our economy. Connecticut is last in economic recovery in the nation. This half of Connecticut is behind the western half of Connecticut. We're dead last. Maybe you guys are, maybe everybody but me is seeing a huge recovery. Maybe I'm the only one that's not, but I'm not seeing it. I look around, like someone said, and I see empty storefronts everywhere. I see foreclosures all over the place. There's a house right around the corner from mine that's going up for auction in just a day or two, and it's all over the place. Dr. Hildebrandt said this is a time for frugality and austerity, and I very much agree with that. This is not a time to be blowing whatever rage you may have gotten in one place, and I do not intend to vote yes on this budget.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Well, I intend to vote yes on the budget despite feeling that it is, we've cut too deeply. And I'll be voting because I believe going forward, this is going to pass this body, and I think the closer we are to unanimity, solidarity going to the people, the better. I don't think it's going to get any higher. I wish we lived in a world where fire trucks didn't need to be replaced, roads didn't need repair, buildings renovated themselves, all of our employees were independently wealthy and could therefore just donate their time to all the jobs they do in our town, that the fuel for school buses didn't go up, the cost of instructional supplies didn't go up. But we don't live in that world. Now, I know that times are hard, and they are, but I often ask when I hear that, could somebody please remind me when the good times were? Because I've been in this town a long time, and I don't remember hearing from the same people who wish to cut the budget every year, that this is a good time to improve. We can go back 15 years, we can look at a lot of things, and they matter. I believe that the last five years have more of an impact on what's happening right now. In the last five years. Five years ago, we had a budget of minus 0.5% for the education system. Next year, we had plus 0.5%, averaging to zero for the two years approximately, doesn't work exactly like that. Then a somewhat larger one, I'm thinking 3, 4, but I might have that wrong. Two years ago, we had a minus 0.21% for our budget. Last year, a plus 0.5%. Tiny, when we have increases, they tend to be very tiny. I know there are people on fixed incomes, but even fixed incomes, most people get a cost of living adjustment, a COLA. Our schools have not. At least, I could be wrong on that, but I, based on the people that I know, most of the people get a COLA. But our schools have not, and it's cut deeper and deeper into what we offer our kids. The kids at Ledyard High School today, which I will say is the one that I know most about, obviously, are not getting the experience that my children got, even as, as close as 2008, when my younger son graduated. And having spent pretty much most of my adult life at Ledyard High School, I can tell you for certain that what kids are getting is significantly diminished compared to what has always been the case. Yes, we have increased study halls, yes, we have teachers teaching six. We've had to reduce the number of graduation requirements at Ledyard High School because of courses and staff unavailable. That is part of the reason that we have increased study halls. Now, I don't believe that if we make this cut, our education system's going to fall apart, that kids are going to be, you know, poorly served because we have dedicated people who are going to do the job no matter what. But this is unsustainable. We cannot continue to fund this responsibility of ours with so little increase that we just watch it go away. I think one of the problems is that we've never really made clear to a sufficient degree what's the harm in the cut. I think most people don't know most of what's lost. In recent years, we were told, we're going in at zero, but we can maintain class size. That's correct. What's not included is the fact that class size is maintained by eliminating courses. At the Ledyard High School, in the last 10 or 12 years, we've had a net loss of 36 different courses. I know that what we're putting through here will still be a fight to get it through, and I want to be supportive in getting it through. But when we hear about it's too much all at once, there is a solution to that. The solution is in the past, and it needs to be the solution going forward. Don't come in at zero, below zero, or just barely above zero, and then be concerned about the size of the increase. Let's meet our responsibilities incrementally, keep the public educated. You know, we have something extremely valuable in our school district. I'm extremely proud of it, I'm proud to have spent most of my life with it. I don't want to see it come to the point where people don't move here, where the million or so dollars we get from kids coming to our schools from other towns to be part of Ledyard High School starts to dry up. We are a school of choice, every school is a school of choice, we are competing for students. The more you let what we offer deteriorate, the long-term effects on our finances will be very consequential. But again, I will support it, and I hope all of you will too.
Any other comments?
Going back in history, David Holder, who will remember this, but the chairman of the town council back in the 70s was a woman by the name of Janet City. And the first time I sat in on one of the finance committee meetings, and public works came in to defend their budget, and she said to them, "This is a bad year." I have heard that song ever since, "Every year is a bad year." But I am going to support the budget, and I hope you all will too.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
If I could, what, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I called you, sir, mayor, sir.
Okay. Thank you, mayor. I, I just want to say just a few words, and I'm not going to speak at all. I think the citizens on Monday night talked very eloquently about the impact, whether they supported or didn't support the budget, the impact on taxpayers and business and others have mentioned that. I think that, I've said it before, and I've said that over and over, I won't get into that. And I know much of the talk here is about the board of education and the job they do, which, you know, I know from personal experience, is a very good job with not a lot of money. I mean, there's no doubt about it, Ledyard gets by with, with less. And I, I just want to share a little bit, because we don't usually talk about general government, you know, somebody once told me, "No one ever shows up at a town meeting to lobby for a dump truck," or, or something like that. But, you know, there are challenges at the town hall that we've had to face as far as austerity and as, as far as working very lean. I mean, we have a situation right now, and it happens regularly, where if an individual, legitimately, a town employee calls in sick, we have difficulty staffing offices, and I'm talking about offices that require daily staffing for the public. You can't just say, "Hey, we're going to close early today." And I've challenged my staff that they have to do business different, and they've risen to the occasion. And, you know, I have a list of things that I haven't accomplished, but that we've accomplished over the past few years to do things differently. And most of those things were situations and changes that people said couldn't be done. And, and I guess the challenge I want to put out there is that we are going to have this problem increasingly every year, you know? Every year's a difficult year. Every year going forward is going to be a difficult year. You know, we have dug ourselves a hole on our insurance, rightly or wrongly, you can disagree with what we've done there, but we have to make that up, and we're going to, and we're going to get by. But, and, and again, this is, this is the statement I made in several letters to the townspeople, and I'm going to go on record again. This budget is not acceptable, and future budgets will not be acceptable, and Ledyard will become unaffordable if we continue doing business the way we do it now. We have to change the way we think, we have to change our definition of government. I'll go so far, if I, if it doesn't sound like I'm meddling, that we're going to have to change the way we educate people, because we cannot sustain the increases that are required with the current system. The current system has built-in escalators that we cannot sustain. And, you know, I'm willing to work with anyone, anyone who has ideas. We're looking at things, shared services, flexible positions, electronics, use of, of media, anything that we can do, and those are the type of things we need to do between budgets, because again, we cannot sustain government in Ledyard if we continue in the form it is now. Thank you.
Mayor, we did not confer prior to this because I think we have the same speech. And about seven, about seven years ago, I left the board of education as chairman, and I decided to run for council. The reporter asked me, "Why would you move from the board of education to the town council?" And I said, "Because on the board of education, you cannot affect change. Every time you come up with a great idea, you can't do it because of this rule, or this state statute, or this, or this is the way it's always done, this is the better way to do it." And I was very frustrated, and that's why I ran for the town council instead. And I wrote down here, "Continue to do business the same way." We can't continue to do business the same way, we're going to be sitting in the same spot next year, having the same struggle unless we start to make some changes. So that's what I was going to say about that, but I also want to mention, I'm not going to beat this dead horse, I promise, but when I questioned the $300,000 overspend account, and today, after several months, we finally got the answer of what happened to the $300,000, at the end of the letter, I didn't have, I have, still have not read the whole letter, it came very late today. I looked at it very quickly, it raised a lot of other questions, unfortunately. But Mr. Strickland and I talked about this this evening, at the end of this letter, it said that he welcomed coming to the town council and discussing that, and I welcome that, I'd like to do it, you know, after we get through this budget. But my concern is that that, first of all, that it happened, and second of all, it raises serious questions about the reliability of the financial data in their budget. I'm very, very concerned about that, and that's a discussion I want to have. That being said, I am also going to vote yes. I was hoping for something lower, but I, I understand, I understand the discussion and the time and effort that went into this, so I, I will plan to vote yes as well. Any other comments? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichberg?
No.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. Mr. France?
Make a motion to approve FY '14 appropriations in the amount of $15,588.46, as listed in the spreadsheet attached, your list later, file number 242944.
Second.
Discussion?
Just briefly, these are essentially refunds for closed accounts, we move from one vendor to another, insurance claims, overpayments, and things, and what happens when that money comes in, it gets applied back to the account where that money was taken from, and this is a process to do that.
Any discussion? Roxanne, call the roll?
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to appropriate $4,422 from revenue account 210400147026, recycling fees to account number two, 2104011356317, recycling program for the purchase of 400 new 24-gallon recyclable bins.
Second.
Discussion?
Briefly, we've exhausted all the recycle bins we have in town, so we replenish that stock. We have the revenue in the recyc, recycling fees line up, and it's currently over $28,000 in that account, so it's a process. Ideally, people will bring, get these recycling bins and continue to increase the amount of recycling product we put on.
Yes. Where are these bins going?
They'll go to town hall, and they'll be issued from town hall.
Okay, so these are for the residents?
Yeah, right. They're for the residents, if they need to come pick them up.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Little bit of history. Several years ago, we discussed purchasing 55-gallon recyclable bins with lids that can be lifted by a truck. That would have cost $55,000. We're spending $4,400 tonight, and we've spent a lot of just time discussing even that. Most people have the small blue bins, these are a little larger. If you have one, please keep the one you have. If you have recyclables overflowing it, please come get one of these. If you don't have one, please come get one of these. If you have a lot, a lot, a lot of recyclables, please go buy a Big Boy. We decided not to spend the $55,000 on the big ones because our, our goal is to increase recyclables. Potentially, we could get that money back. We could potentially get the $55,000 back if people recycle more. So I'm just going to beg the residents, especially since we just talked about... Potentially, we could get that money back. We could potentially get the $55,000 back if people recycle more. So, I'm just going to beg the residents, especially since we just talked about the budget tonight, the single line item that you have the most control over and the money the town spends is recycled. So, please fill your blue bin if you have one, if you don't, get a bigger one, fill it up, you will save the town money. Thank you.
As a point on that, two years ago, when they emphasized this, that change was for every ton that gets shifted from garbage to recycle was about $100, so.
And filling your blue bin, your neighbor's blue bin doesn't?
Roxanne, would you call the roll? Yes, go ahead.
And, and if you do buy your own bin, we do have the labels. I have a label right here. We have these labels right here in the Town Hall. I should let John do that. John does, yeah, it's a, it's a block. We have these, you can get these at the Town Hall, put them on any can that you may buy to use for recyclers and work. And if you see neighbors that don't have a, you know, drive down to, going to work in the morning, you see a house that doesn't have a blue bin, you know, either let us know or if you really like the people and they like you, you know, knock on their door and, and, and offer them a blue bin.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cebordi?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Mr. France, item number six?
I make a motion to approve interdepartment transfers in total amount of $19,315.30 as listed in our attachment to Legislative File Number 2954.
Second. Discussion?
Briefly, once again, similar to the appropriation of the revenue comeback, these are transferred between accounts, between departments, you have to wait till April, after April 1st to make these transfers, but this essentially is, is either previously we've authorized over expenditure of account, now we're reconciling those accounts ahead of the end of the fiscal year, or these are accounts that needed to be reconciled in the process. It's now after April 1st so we can move between departments.
Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Would somebody make the motion number eight, please?
I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of reviewing records, reports, and statements of strategy or negotiation with respect to collective bargaining pertaining to the Legyard Town Hall Health Pates, Local 1303-210, AFSCME, National Council Number Four, for the period of July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2017. This action is taken without prejudice from the Town Council's right to discuss some private strategy and/or negotiations with respect to collective bargaining pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Chapter 14, Section 1-200 and 1-201B.
Second.
And present of the B, the members of the Town Council, direct to name them all?
No.
Members of the Town Council, hand them here.
Second.
Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. We'll take about a five-minute recess.[1603.13]